Good evening.
Good evening. This is the eighth meeting of the seventh. The first term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Going to ask anyone who has cell phones to either put them on vibrate or please turn them off. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Terry Thornton of Sweet Hope Free World Baptist Church. After the invocation, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
To the Baltimore City Council President Jack Young, Sixth District Councilwoman Sharon Middleton-Green, and all the members of Baltimore City Council, God bless you. Let us pray. Gracious God our Father, we bow in humble submission to give you all of the glory, the honor, and the praise. Many of us have titles, but help us to remain humble and not feel entitled. We submit ourselves to you because we understand you have given us this privilege and this opportunity to serve. We thank you for granting us the privilege to serve Baltimore City, Maryland. We do not take this privilege for granted, and we are striving to serve this great city with integrity, with dignity, and with charity. I pray your greatest blessings upon the City Council of Baltimore as they strive to make Baltimore one of the greatest cities in the world. I pray of God that you will guide the City Council of Baltimore in every decision that is to be made so that the citizens and businesses of our city are positively impacted and are able to live out the fullness of their purposes. Bless the City Council of Baltimore to lead our city, to be its best as they serve this city with their best. We pray this prayer in the name of the One who rules above with a hand of mercy and a heart of love. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Thornton?
Thank you. The clerk will call the role of the members.
President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Holton, Welsh, Rice, Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark. Mr. President, with the quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation is by Kristen McGuire of the Baltimore College Town Network. She will talk about the great work they do to attract, engage, and retain students, raise the profile of Baltimore as a college destination, and help colleges share resources. Welcome.
Thank you so much. My name is Kristen Campbell-Maguire. I am Executive Director of Baltimore College Town. Thank you, Council President and distinguished members of the council for giving me a minute tonight. Did you know that Baltimore is a great college town? It is. There are fourteen colleges here and 120,000 students that call Baltimore home. It's a great college town. So about fifteen years ago, the colleges here got together and formed the Baltimore College Town Network. We're a nonprofit organization, and as the president said, we're here to attract, engage, and retain students. So first, we try to get students to come here. We want students in Baltimore County, Montgomery County, New York, New Jersey, California, and China to all think about Baltimore as being a great place to go to school and get involved. So after students get here, we try to get them engaged in the area. That might be by getting an internship, by volunteering, by going out to arts and culture. So we run the College Town Shuttle. It takes 100,000 riders a year to different destinations around the city. We run College Town Leadership. It's like GBC Leadership for students where sixty students a year from our colleges get together, create visions for Baltimore, and actually start working on them. So we've got students working to eradicate homelessness and end human trafficking and make sure every child has access to a great education. Students are doing really great work here in our city. And finally, we try to engage students so much that they'll want to stay here after they graduate. So we try to get students internships. We have an internship board. It's the only one of its kind in the region. If you have students in your districts who are looking for internships, I hope you'll send them to our website. If your office is looking for an intern, I hope you'll post it on our website so that you'll get lots of great candidates from our colleges. And so we do want to retain students here. It's really important that we keep our students, and we're working closely with the mayor's office to make sure that students are part of the 10,000 new residents that we have and that our anchors are seen as great resources here in Baltimore so that we really are working together to build this as a vibrant region and a great college town. I hope you'll visit our website if you'd like to know more, baltimorecolletstown.org. It just launched today. It's a brand-new site with lots of great information.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. We all have the gray folders. Give us all the information we need to know. But those of you who live in Baltimore, we know about all the great colleges that we have, and we know the great work that they do. And Murray Pat's district around Johns Hopkins is a field of college town around the University of Baltimore, and we're trying to have it grow all over the city around our colleges so there can be a vibe and praise, not only for the students but for the residents who live here. And I said Morgan. They're doing the Morgan mile. Now, I didn't mention Morgan. I said, but all the other colleges, Loyola, they all are trying to do this great work to attract more students to Baltimore. All right, it is the council custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Kern. Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal of the proceedings from the February 23 City Council meeting is on the council member's desk.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Councilman Henry. Second by Vice President Rice Singer. All those in favor of adopting the journal say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. The journal is adopted. Bills will be introduced.
City Council Bill 15-0485, Urban Renewal Sharp-Ludden Hall Amendment. Ordinance for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Sharp-Ludden Hall to modify certain permitted land uses, to delete certain provisions that allow property acquisition and the creation of disposition lots in the renewal plan, to modify certain provisions regarding community review and the process for amending the renewal plan, to clarify, conform, and correct certain languages and references, to delete from the plan certain provisions relating to inclusionary housing that may have been superseded by an ordinance of the mayor and city council, to delete Appendix A in its entirety, to reletter Appendix B to be Appendix A, and to modifying certain of the provisions, to delete certain exhibits from the renewal plan, to revise, renumber, and rename certain exhibits, and to add a new exhibit to the plan, weaving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date.
Sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Urban Affairs and Aging Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0486, Resoning a Portion of 901 South Caton Avenue. Ordinance for the purpose of changing the zoning for a portion of a property known as 901 South Caton Avenue, as outlined and read in the accompanying plot, from the OR2 zoning district to the B22 zoning district. Sponsor Rice Singer.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0487, Zoning Office Residence District Accessory Shops. Ordinance for the purpose of increasing the maximum aggregate size allowed for certain accessory shops, uses, and an office residence district. Sponsor Rice Singer.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 15-0206, R, National Youth Violence Prevention Week, March 23 through March 27, 2015. Resolution for the purpose of recognizing March 23 to 27, 2015, as National Youth Violence Protection Week, and urging all Baltimoreans to use this week as an opportunity to reflect on how we can take a stand for our children by helping to deliver the message that violence is never acceptable. Sponsor Scott, President Young, Middleton, Henry, Costello, Kraft, Stokes, Holton, Specter, Rice Singer, Clark, Branch.
Please note that Councilman Kern and Councilman Welsh are co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Mr. President. Mr. President and colleagues, we know that each year in March is National Youth Violence Prevention Week, and again, here in Baltimore, there will be tons of activities spearheaded by the Health Department and other agencies. We just want to do our part in acknowledging that but also encouraging everyone to get involved in the fight for our young people's lives, not just during this week but throughout the year. Our young people are our greatest asset, and we are losing too many of them each year, each week, not just in Baltimore but across our country. Mr. President, I would like to suspend appropriate rules to...
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of suspending rules from me to adopt this resolution say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Rules to suspend. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 15-0206-R say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. This resolution is adopted. You can find the consent counter in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent counter? Motion by Councilman Kern. Second by Councilman Welsh. All those in favor of approving the consent counter say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. This counter is approved. We will now move the bills on second reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Move short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of short titles for the remainder of the meeting say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0361, Late Night Commercial Operations, Multiple Businesses.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee first heard this bill on July 31 of last year. We then had a series of work sessions and worked on the bill over the course of the ensuing months. There's an extensive package of amendments on council members' desks. I move them all favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is to approve the amendments adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0200R, Investigative Hearing Valet Parking Program.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we had a hearing from the valet parking last Wednesday, February 25. We had Mr. Little and all the people from the Parking Authority come in along with folks from Transportation, Police Department, everyone involved in the valet parking program. We had a good presentation about it. Our main concern was basically enforcing the valet program, making sure that people were using licensed valet operators, that they were parking the cars on registered lots, and finding out who in fact could enforce the valet law. And as a result of that, we found out today that the Parking Authority is going to, and the Department of Transportation are going to the police commissioner to get authority for the parking enforcement officers to be authorized to enforce the valet law. So that will help us tremendously. So I move this favorably as we did have the hearing.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this resolution say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this resolution is adopted. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0393, Resoning 2700 Raynor Avenue.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Rice Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Welsh. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Vice President Rice Singer.
Mr. President, this bill has an amendment. I move the amendment.
Second by Councilman Welsh. All those in favor, second by Councilman Welsh. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. This motion is approved. The amendment is adopted. Chair recognizes Vice President Rice Singer.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Welsh. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. Who said nay? Oh, no nays. The motion is approved. The bill moves to third reader. I thought I heard somebody say nay. Didn't you hear that?
City Council Bill 15-0470, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a Fifteen Family Dwelling Unit in the R7 zoning district, 3110 Crittintown, please.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Rice Singer.
Mr. President, there's no amendments to this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Urban Affairs and Aging Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0453, Baltimore City Land Marklist, Olmstead Parkwayes.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on February 26, 2015. There are technical amendments on your desk. I move the amendments favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The amendment is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader to be held one meeting.
City Council Bill 13-0272, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a Twenty-Three Family Dwelling Unit in the R8 zoning district, Varian's 1209 North Road Street. City Council Bill 14-0466, Resoning 1209 North Road Street.
Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 14-0448, Natural Resources Solar, Rosgen, and Sediment Control, Delegation of Hearing Authority. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0450, City Streets Closing a Portion of Creek Alley. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0451, Sale of Property, Former Bed of Creek Alley. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0456, Resoning 2001, 2011, 2013, 2105, 2107, and 2201 West Cole Spring Lane. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Holton, Welsh, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton. I said committee announcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 150474 on March 26, 2015, at 4:00 PM here in council chambers. And the bill is concerning the Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority, the renewal through April 23, 2019.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee was scheduled to have a public hearing on Council Bill 140464, Hotels Human Trafficking Prevention, on Tuesday, March 17, 2015, at 10:00 AM here in the council chambers. We will meet that morning, but instead of having a public hearing, we will have a work session on the bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Mr. President, the Health Committee has a couple announcements here. The City Council Ordinance 15-475, Drug, Paraphernalia, and Smoking Aids Commercial Display to Minors was scheduled to have a hearing tomorrow that will be postponed to a date to be determined. So 15-475, who was scheduled for hearing tomorrow, is postponed to a date to be determined. It was scheduled for 1:00 tomorrow. The Health Committee also wants to make an announcement that there will be the third voting session after six work sessions, after a hearing on City Council 12-0121, Food Service Facilities Public Notification of Inspection Grades will have its final voting session, hopefully, next Monday at 1:30 PM in the Reeves Room, because the chambers, I believe, was going to be used for the State of the City Address. So 1:30 PM in the Reeves Room for City Council Bill 12-0121. It is the work session and voting session on food service facilities, public notice of inspection grades.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Appropriations Committee will hear Resolution 12-0008R on Tuesday, March 24, 4:00 PM here in chambers for a quarterly budget briefing for the purpose of calling on the chief of the Finance Department's Bureau of Budget and Management Research to brief the city council on how the city's actual finances compare to its budgeted projections in a timely manner after the close of each quarter in the city's fiscal year. At our last budget briefing on December 8, 2014, the Department of Finance discussed fiscal year 2014 closeout and projections for the first quarter of fiscal year 2015. On March 24, we are requesting the Department of Finance to present an update on the status of the city's budget for the first half of fiscal year 2015, July 1, 2014 through December 31, 2014, and we ask that they present the first quarter and the second quarter cumulative to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, Economic Development will hold a hearing on March 19, 2015, on Council Bill 14-0438, 10:00 AM here in chambers. Sale of Property, Former Bed, a Portion of Old Hawkins Point Road between Curtis Creek and Pennington Avenue. Secondly, Taxation and Finance Economic Development will hold a hearing on Bill 14-0189R, March 19, 10:20 AM here in chambers. Investigative hearing, City Buy Efficiency and Cost Savings to the City of Baltimore for the Purpose. I request that the Department of Finance and the Bureau of Purchases report to the city council on the current operations of the city buy program, the efficiency of the city buy program, and whether the procurement agreements used in the city of Baltimore are ensuring that supplies and goods are purchased at the best prices available. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Rice Singer.
Mr. President, I move to suspend rules to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspended rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Rice Singer.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 15-0482 on Wednesday, April 1, 2015, in the council chambers. This is a zoning conditional use conversion of a two-family dwelling unit to a three-family dwelling unit in the R7 zoning district located at 3425 through 3427 Keszwick Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment to thank DOT and DPW. Over the last 15 days of this storm, DOT has laid out some ungodly amount of tonnage of salt, and the folks from DPW have dealt with over 5,800 water requests. I think that number's down to 400. I know Marcia Collins and Kristin Oldendorf from DPW are here, and those folks have been nothing short of all-stars throughout this, so thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, I stand to say that it's the month of March. It's Women's Her Story Month. It's an opportunity for us to stop and take time to focus on the contributions of women to the history of America, to Maryland, and the city of Baltimore. Yes, that does warrant applause. Thank you. We deserve it. You know, oftentimes, it goes unnoticed, the significance that if you remove the contributions of women to the history of America, our country would be nowhere near where it is today. And so from every sector of society, you will find that there are women that make an undeniable contribution to our history, and it is only when we tell her story and add it to his story that we truly have the history of who we are as people. Thank you, and congratulations to all the women.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, this past weekend at Heron Run Recreation Center, we hosted the first annual Lenny Braxton Basketball Tournament, which was in honor of Coach Lenny, who ran the recreation and passed away last month. I would like to thank all of the people who came out and packed the house from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Saturday in honor of Coach Lenny, and congratulate City Springs on the elementary side and NAF Academy on the middle side for their championship wins, and we look forward to seeing everybody again next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark, and then I guess you, Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My colleague reminded me that tonight is the night to congratulate U.S. Senator Barbara A. McCulkey for climbing on her pogo stick many years ago and breaking the glass ceiling for a lot of us women who have gone on to also be elected to office at various city councils, county councils, general assemblies, and the like. It was in this very chamber that Senator McCulkey began her career, sitting there where Councilman Kern is sitting, and I was sitting where Council, after I came into office four years later, I was where Councilman Henry is, and so I was behind Barbara McCulkey all the way, and always have been. And she, when she arrived, she picked up one of the spittoons. Can I just have that for a minute to hold it up so people can see what we're talking about? Grab mine. No, that's a, no! It's a spittoon. This is a spittoon. And she put a geranium in that spittoon and changed the whole culture of the Baltimore City Council. I just want to say that today she announced, Senator McCulkey did, that she was not going to run for office again. I'm sorry to hear it, but she, she almost doesn't have to run for office. She is office. She is Senator Barbara McCulkey, an institution in herself, that we will always go to, to find out what we're supposed to do and what we're not supposed to do, and to admire the leadership she has displayed for so many years and will continue to do so. Thanks.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Kern, followed by Councilman Kraft. Anybody else have any announcements? All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleague from the 14th district for starting off the accolades for our Senator Barbara McCulkey. And it's ironic that this was the chair, or the position of the chair, that she sat in in the city council. And this was the first district delegation, the first three seats here. The second district started over there, and so it's fitting that I would just say what a tribute that she's been to, not just for all the women, but all the issues that she took under her arm and nurtured, such as the port. Where would the port of Baltimore be without the influence of Barbara McCulkey over the years championing the port issues? And we all know that the way she got started was stopping the road. She stopped the road, and that's where she got her notoriety to run for city council, was very successful, and in 1976 became a member of U.S. Congress, and then was it six years later or so, came U.S. Senator for four terms, I believe. But Baltimore is a great ally, and I'm sure there will be, hopefully, that whoever runs that seat will understand that what that seat means to Baltimore, not because we're the economic generator of the state, but because of what the port means. And hopefully that whoever fills that seat, fortunate enough to fill that seat next year, will keep in mind how important our port is. You should see the senator over at Eddie's in Roan Park, and he would be very kind, and she wouldn't have staff, but wouldn't have a whole lot of folks with her. She'd be just there shopping herself, and we would talk for a few minutes. I know the counselor from 14th, we saw her in city hall just Thursday with her folks. But it's a real tribute to Barbara McCulkey that she represented not only the Congress in Congress, but also as a U.S. Senator, and I know that this town is going to miss her very much, and we just hope whoever sees her can fill her shoes, because she meant a lot to all of us. In city council, she meant a lot. In U.S. Congress, she meant a lot. In U.S. Senate, she's meant a lot. And Barbara McCulkey, I can gladly say has always been a friend, served for my dad back in the, in the day. So thank you, Barbara, for being here for all these years. I know these next 18 months, you're going to be here just as good as you've been here for the last 30 years in Congress. So a real tribute to a great person, Barbara McCulkey.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman, I mean, no. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for a very special young man, 24-years-old, Joseph Riley Olmstead III, who was killed in a single car accident yesterday morning, actually. Very special young man, a graduate of Towson Catholic, and was currently a teacher of autistic children, and lives, I believe, in Councilman Henry's community. Most of us know his dad, Joseph Olmstead II. He was very active in campaigns and made sure that a lot of our signs went up. Anyway, so I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Joe, little Joe. Thank you.
Joe Olmstead. Uh-huh, the second. I mean, was he the second or the fourth call? The third. Okay. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Rice Singer, because I thought Olmstead was the senior.
Mr. President, members of the council, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, March 9, at 5:00 PM in the council chambers, and I ask for a moment be held on Monday, March 9 at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers, and I ask for a moment of silence for Joseph Armstead III.
Thank you. Before we dismiss, I want to inform the council and the listening public that the State of the City Address will be next Monday, March 9, at 3:00 p.m. So that means, council people, please be on time. Good night.